That worked, Melissa, you're a genius.
Okay, Kevin, we'll just wait for you to show there you go and Robert, you may proceed. Thank you all.
All right, thank you, and still with, we'll call the meeting to order. And I'll do the opening preamble. As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty III lands, which are steep in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for our partnership with their indigenous people. This is a hearing of the Planning, Canora Planning Advisory Committee and Committee of Adjustments for the City of Canora. The committee members have been appointed by council to consider applications for minor variances, consents, plans of subdivisions, or condominium descriptions within the jurisdiction of the Planning Act. The applicants or agents will be given an opportunity to speak on behalf of their submissions and to respond to questions arising from the discussion of these applications. Interesting members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak in favor of or in opposition to the applications being dealt with at these hearings. Prior to the calling of the meeting to order, please ensure that your microphone is on mute. Should you be joining this video or this meeting with video, please be mindful of what is visible to the public in your surroundings. Be respectful of others throughout the meeting, and at any time you wish to leave the meeting, you are free to do so by just simply clicking on end call at the bottom of your screen. If you are on a landline, you may hang up at any time. However, please do not interrupt the meeting to inform your dismissal. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and by continuing, continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to be recorded. Tap Leave Meeting to opt out and exit this session. When it comes time for public comments, I will address the participant by the name that was used to register for this virtual pack meeting. Once your name has been called, please then unmute your microphone or your telephone. All persons addressing the community committee shall state their full name and mailing address and must direct their comments through the chair myself. Decisions will be mailed or emailed to the applicants, agents, or other interested parties who have provided their mailing address and/or email address to the Secretary Treasurer at mshaw@canora.ca. Also, a notice of adjourned application or possible local planning appeal tribunal hearing will also be provided to those who have made a written request from form via email to the Secretary Treasurer at mshaw@canora.ca. The decision and/or condition imposed by the committee can be appealed by the Ontario Land Tribunal or the OLT. Notice of Appeal for Minor Variance Application must be filed with the Secretary Treasurer within 20 days of the making of the decision. A notice of appeal for the Land Division Application must be filed with the Secretary Treasurer within 20 days of the mailing of the notice. The Secretary Treasurer for the Canora Plan Advisory Committee is Melissa Shaw. The city planner is Kevin Sumner. I don't think he's joining but tonight, but the manager of Development Services is Adam Smith. And the minute taker tonight is Tess Obiski. And I will ask if there are any additions to the agenda, Melissa?
We have no additions, thank you.
Okay, about a declaration of interest of a member of this meeting or or at a meeting of which a member was not present in the Declaration of Independent or Conflict? Seeing none. Melissa, any correspondence related to the application before the committee?
We've received no written correspondence, Mr. Chair, but I will just identify that there are a few members of public here with us this evening. And so I do understand you will be asking if there are any comment, so just for your, your knowledge.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we're here to take a look at an application or a recommendation to council for a zoning bylaw change filed D fourteen dash twenty-two dash zero one, Strekka Road. And I will now ask the applicant or agent to please make a presentation on behalf of the application.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't quite prepared to go right now. I guess typically we hear the planning report first. But I'm certainly prepared to do some. So the Canora Chiefs Advisory has made an application to amend the zoning bylaw for the property located at three seventy-one Strekka Road, which is off the Canora Bypass at the Jones Road intersection. And they purchased this property a year ago, perhaps two years ago for the purpose of redeveloping it for indigenous youth programming. And they've been kind of diligently working on that over the, over the past year, year and a half. But what they require in order to deliver these programs would be an amendment to the zoning bylaw. And the request is to amend the existing zoning, which has several different zones on the property. It's about three hundred and thirty so acres, so it's a fairly large piece of property. It has frontage on Black Sturgeon Lake. And along that area, there are a couple of environmental protection designations. So it has an EP designation. It has a couple of old gravel pits on it, which is owned MX Extractive Industrial. It has one small kind of postage stamp size zoning designation of tourist recreational. I think with a hold on it or a hazard designation as well, which we couldn't quite figure out. That's would be the old Keno Farms operation where they used to hold events out there. But the balance of the property is owned rural and the intent of the amendment, the request in the amendment is to rezone basically all of the property rural, which permits a wide range of uses, most of which will suit the needs of Canora Chiefs Advisory. But we also propose to leave the environmental protection designations. There are two EP designations. I think it's in the planning report that was prepared by the city planner, which is quite comprehensive, I would add. And we propose to, to leave those. But we're going to get rid of the extractive industrial designations and get rid of the tourism recreational, tourist recreational designation, and the balance of the property will be rezoned rural. Some of the uses that are proposed by Canora Chiefs Advisory would be an equestrian therapy operation, hobby farm. They're going to have kind of a community garden, therapeutic garden, if you will, because it used to be a farm. They want to have a little information orientation center, some recreation facilities. The key one would be the development of several recreational ball diamonds for both hardball and softball. An outdoor skating rink. They're looking at some eco cabins or wilderness cabins for youth programming. They would not be serviced, but they would house some of the residents involved in various programs. There'll be a ceremonial area, powwow grounds. There'll be a dock facility at the shoreline of Black Sturgeon Lake, and I already had mentioned the community, community gardens. I think in your package that you received from the city planning department, you did see a conceptual plan for the property with a range of uses that I won't go over again. But again, they're well spaced on the property. They're very, very low density types of uses, which are most appropriate for rural setting. If you have any questions on those at the end of my, my brief synopsis, we can, we can talk about those. As I mentioned earlier, you know, it's interesting that they are keeping the community gardens or therapeutic gardens, if you will, in the equestrian center. This has historically been a farm. One of many former farms in the former town of Jeffrey Malik, run by the Strekka family for, I think, at least three generations. And in fact, it was, while it's wound down over the years, as the former owner Stan Strekka got older, there were still some residual farming operations occurring right up until the point where the KCA bought the property. And there are a number of outbuildings on the property, and we provided the city with a site plan sketch that outlines where those buildings are located, the size of those buildings, and the setbacks for those buildings. They were all the kind of outbuildings that were used to support the previous farm operation on the property. And they're also noted in black on the conceptual site plan sketch that was provided in the planning report that was provided by the city planner. The other key feature on the property, it is bisected by the Trans-Canada Pipeline. And Trans-Canada Pipeline Limited is then, of course, a player in this because they don't like anything to happen on their pipeline. And we have received comments from TCPL and will be working with both the city and TCPL to make sure, in fact, we've already revised the site plan, the conceptual plan a couple times to move the ball fields, and I think we still need to move the hockey rink off of the pipeline easement and off of a pipeline easement with a minimum of a seven meter setback from the, from the pipeline easement, because it's, these aren't buildings or structures, they're more landscape type features at the end of the day is ball fields and, and you know, an outdoor rink. They don't pose any immediate threats or problems, but we still need to work with TCPL at the appropriate time when construction of these facilities commence to make sure that we have permission from TCPL and they are, they're okay with these facilities and they reviewed the proposals. And they sign off on the fact that they are, they do have the required setbacks from the TCPL pipeline easement. So that's one of the most important kind of pieces of infrastructure that is, what would I call, a a major constraint to development on the site, and Canora Chiefs Advisory will willingly work around that. I won't get into the whole detail on consistency with the official plan and, and provincial policy statements. Just very generally, when you look at development in rural areas, the, I'll let the city planner speak to that. But the PPS is generally supportive of this type of development in a rural area. And in fact, almost all of the uses proposed by KCL are permitted in the, in the rural area and the rural, in the rural zone with a couple of exceptions that were kind of iffy judgment calls. So we've made a request to the city to add to site-specific uses. One is a place of assembly and the other one escapes me at the moment. I think, oh, public gatherings. And that would be for their powwow ceremonies. And the assembly hall would really be added to accommodate the former Keno Farms building, which is a large structure. It has a kitchen facility in it. It's where they used to have their events. They'll be hosting other types of events that are related to their programs in this facility. And we wanted to make sure it was specifically in there as a permitted use, so there are no questions in the future. That about covers off the zoning bylaw. I'm just looking at some of the comments from the various agencies. TCPL, I've covered the health unit. They're all on septic fields and wells out there. So of course, there's no municipal services north of the bypass. It's a rural area. Everything will be serviced privately from various wells and septic fields, and Canora Chiefs Advisory has been working with the Northwestern Health Unit to make sure that the sewage, mainly the sewage disposal systems are up to code. The, the only other comment I would add, and then I'm open to taking questions from the Planning Advisory Committee. I know, oh, a couple of other issues. The zoning bylaw amendment has been circulated to the Ministry of Northern Development Mines and Forestry or whatever their latest incarnation is. They have requested an environmental impact study. And I think the trigger mainly was the two, two things. One would be the environmental protection areas, which are already on the zoning map, so that's a bit of a flag. And the other would be just to make sure if there are any development proposed at that land shoreline interface with Black Sturgeon Lake, that there wouldn't be any harmful effects for fish and wildlife habitat. It'll also go through what they call SARS screening, which is species at risk and threatened and endangered species as well. So we've retained Ryan Haynes, Canora Resource Consultants, and he will be, he's in the process right now preparing a scope EIS as requested by the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry and requested also by the city of Canora. So that study is underway. The only other issue that I noted in the city planning report would be also kind of sign off by the same ministry, but on the minerals division for the two former aggregate or gravel pits. References made to the Mining Act. And I, I believe, and I will confirm this with the ministry, but it's actually the Aggregate Resources Act which applies. And there are some very specific rules under the ARA, as it's called, for both issuing licenses, both on private land and public land for aggregate extraction. I don't believe these pits fell under that because they're so old, but we'll confirm that with the ministry. And if there is a license in effect for these gravel pits, then for the decommissioning of the gravel pits, there's a site closure plan. So we'll take a look at if a license has been issued, what the terms and conditions of those licenses were, and if there was a closure plan, if the terms and conditions of the closer closure plan were met, or if additional remedial action might be required. So I'll follow up with the ministry on that. It's been a request by the city. And I believe it is the ARA, the Aggregate Resources Act and not the Mining Act would apply, but we'll get that sorted out. My final comment, of course, with any rezone, it circulated to all residents within a hundred and twenty meters of the perimeter of the property. It's mostly rural in that area. In fact, it borders the city boundary to the east. There are a couple of cottages in an, in an older cottage lot subdivision on the east side of Black Sturgeon Lake, just to, to the east of, of, of the Strekka Farm property or now the KCA property. I was, of course, wondering if we might receive some comments from the residents in the area as indicated by Miss Shaw. Apparently, as of today's date, we've received no comments from the public on this application to rezone from its present zoning to a rural and EP zone. The final comment I would make, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the application. There's also a suggestion from the city planning department that it go forward to council with a whole designation. Now, a whole designation fund basically approves the rezone, but it's conditional until a couple of things get done. One would be the environmental impact study, and the other would be making sure that those pits were remediated properly, and we're fine with that. I'll talk to Kevin and Melissa about this. Depending on the timing, I'd kind of prefer it go ahead without a hold. So what I want to do is talk to, one, the ministry on the status of those pits, and number two, Ryan Haynes on the timing of his completing the environmental impact study. And I think if we assume there are no issues arise from the environmental impact study and that's done, if those two things get done ahead of time before it goes to council, then a hold is not required. And I think we'd rather go to council once with those tasks completed ahead of time, rather than a hold where it gets approved conditionally, but with a hold, you've got to go back and go back to council again. I don't believe a public meeting is required to remove the hold or a circulation, but it means you've got to go back to council for another decision, which is to remove the hold. And at that point, then the city planners would have in their possession the required information that would have been part of the hold. Anyway, we'll sort that out with the city planning department, whether it proceeds with a hold or without a hold. We'd rather get those things done ahead of time if we can, if it all possible. But if not, then the hold will be the way to go. And I think that without getting into too much technical detail, that briefly summarizes the nature of the application.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Kevin, would you like to please give us your planning report from staff?
Yep, certainly can do so. Good evening, everyone. So this application is for a zoning amendment to change the zoning of the subject property from a mix, a current mix of RU or Rural Zone, MX or Extractive Industrial Zone, and TRHL, which is Tourist Recreation Zone, the Hazard Land Exceptional Overlay and Environmental Protection Zone to RU fifty-three Rural Exceptional Zone with permitted site-specific use of a community hall and place of assembly and EP Environmental Protection Zone. So that maintains the EP protection, Environmental Protection Zone as is, and changes the other zonings on the property to Rural fifty-three. So the agent has stated that the intent of the use of the property is for indigenous, indigenous youth programming. So there's a site plan submitted that, that provides a lot of detail there on the location, the nature of each of the anticipated projects on the property. I will bother reviewing it here, the, the whole list, and Mr. Ford already touched on this. And I will note that the application was submitted with a phase one environmental site assessment, which is in the package. And I'll move forward. I know that there are a couple of maps in here provided for, for information, including the aforementioned map that figure two, which is the master plan prepared by HDFC Planning and Design, which lists all those planned uses for the property. Just touching on site history and existing condition of the property. It is located at the north end of Strekka Road, as mentioned, on the shores of Black Sturgeon Lake. Measurements from our GIS maps indicate the property is approximately a hundred and twenty-four hectares in area, and the shoreline extends for approximately two kilometers. Now, as the crows flies from the northern point to the shoreline to the southern point of the shoreline, I think it's about a kilometer. It zigzags, so if you, if you trace the shoreline, there's about two kilometers of actual shoreline on the lake. And as already mentioned, there is the Trans-Canada Natural, Natural Gas Pipeline there. There are two areas that are zone DP, as mentioned, indicate, and this, what this indicates in general is areas that have historical and natural significance. We did review our files and try to trace back the history of how these EP designations came to be on the property. We did, we were able to trace them back approximately thirty years. And at that point, we still hadn't gotten to any records indicating why they're there, unfortunately. So you want to hazard a guess, but you know, but you know, any future development in proximity to those EP areas will have to give consideration to them. So, and there are two portions zoned as MX and Extractive Industrial, which we understand were previously used for aggregate extraction. And now in nineteen ninety-two, the zoning of a portion of the property, which is, which I call the yard site where most of the structures are, was amended to what was then called CL one or Local Commercial Site Specific Zone to permit the operation of a licensed dance hall and eating establishment. The CL zone being the equivalent of today's LC Local Commercial Zone. And in two thousand and one, the zoning of a large central portion of the property, including the area previously zoned CL one and extending most of the way to the shore of the lake was amended to TC Tourist Commercial to allow for the establishment of an RV capsite and guest cabins. And that zoning persisted on the property for several years until a new zoning bylaw was adopted in two thousand and four, at which time the zoning reverted back to the rural zoning. And this is another area where we know that it reverted by looking at our records. There's no record of why that was changed with the adoption of, of the new zoning bylaw and all the new zoning bylaw maps. Now, there are a few images in my report for the information to the committee, just some snapshots of different parts of the property. It's a large and complex property by train and the number of structures on the property. But hopefully that gives you a bit of a glimpse into the, into the nature of the property. Moving on to consistency with legislative policy and city directives, starting with the provincial policy statement. In general, I'd say their policies are generally supportive of the nature of the development, though offer some cautions in regards to the some site-specific concerns. So starting with policy one point, one point, four point one, that which states that healthy, integrated, and viable rural areas should be supported by a building upon rural character and leveraging rural amenities and assets. And then skipping forward to point G, providing opportunities for sustainable and diversified tourism, including leveraging historical, cultural, and natural assets. Then turning to policy one point, one point, five point three, which indicates in rural lands located in municipalities, recreation, tourism, and other economic opportunities should be promoted. And one point, one point, five point four, which states a development that is compatible with the rural landscape and can be sustained by rural service levels should be. Now, policy two point, one point two of the PPS does direct that the diversity and connectivity of natural features in an area and the long-term ecological function and biodiversity of natural heritage system should be maintained, restored, or where possible, improved, recognizing linkages between and among natural heritage features and areas, surface water features and groundwater features, and I include that policy because of its relevance to the EP areas and the shorelines of Black Sturgeon Lake, which are an area of special focus for the municipality. Now, turning to policies relevant to the aggregate resources, policy two point five point, two point five states that in known deposits of mineral aggregate resources and on adjacent lands, development and activities which would preclude or hinder the establishment of new operations or access to the resources should only permitted if A, resource use would not be feasible or B, the proposed land use or development serves a long, greater, longer term to net public interest, and C, issues of public health, public safety, and environmental impact are addressed. So it's important to read that as A or B, and then if B applies, and C. And then turning to policy two point five point, three point one, which states that progressive and final rehabilitation shall be required in to accommodate subsequent land uses, to promote land use compatibility, to recognize the interim nature of extraction, and to mitigate negative impacts to the extent possible. Final rehabilitation shall take surrounding land use and approval approved land use designations into consideration. Now, just aside, I think somebody's got their mic off. I'm hearing some chimes coming through from somebody's computer, just not sure who that is. Moving on to the city of Canora official plan. The land use designation of the majority of the subject property is rural area. Two portions of the property corresponding with the former aggregate, aggregate operations are designated as industrial area. The southern half of the property is identified in the official plan schedule A as a potential aggregate area with a portion of that area being further identified on schedule B as having high mineral resource potential. Two abandoned mine hazard sites are located to the east of the subject property in an organized territory, and those are all, you can see all those all illustrated on figure ten. The rural area designation indicates lands that may be used for a variety of uses with limited change over the lifetime of the plan. The industrial area designation is intended to identify employment areas where major industry and related enterprises are encouraged to locate. Section five point one directs that when potential development may have an impact on or be impacted by one of the natural heritage features or areas described in that section of the plan, we may refer the appropriate agency for comment. Comments from the Ministry of Northern Development Mines, Natural Resources, and Forestry may be found in section six of the report, and I'll get to those in a minute. And those comments recommend an environmental impact study be completed for the site. Section eight point nine point two provides direction for completion of a full site EIS. So that's what we, that sets out what we'd expect from the IS. Now, turning to the aggregate policies relevant to the aggregate resources. Pulse, and these are similar, you'll see, to the provincial policy statement. Five point, five point one A directs that in areas showing as potential aggregate areas, so that southern portion of the property and high mineral resource potential on adjacent lands development, which would preclude or hinder the establishment of new operations or access to the resources shall be permitted if, and there's three points here, that resource use would not be feasible or the proposed land use or development serves a greater long-term interest, and in that case, issues of public health, public safety, and environmental impact are addressed. And five point, five point one B is very similar, but talking about non-extractive land uses or development that are prohibited in those areas identified as having an aggregate or mineral resource potential unless it can be shown, then showing that, and again, extraction would not be feasible, or the proposed land use or development. land use or development serves a greater long-term interest to the general public or or the proposed land use or development does not preclude or hinder future extraction and would not be incompatible with the future extraction for reasons of again, public health, public safety and environmental impact. And then five point, five point, one C directs us in the matter of rehabilitation that it shall be required after extraction and other related activities have ceased in order to accommodate new land uses promote land use compatibility, to recognize the interim nature of the extraction and to mitigate negative impacts to the extent possible. A final rehabilitation shall take surrounding land use and approve land use designations into consideration. And an official plan amendment to the new land use designation may be required to implement the subsequent land use, progressive rehabilitation should be undertaken where feasible. And final, our second last policy here, five point, five point, one G directs the development in those areas for purposes other than resource extraction shall not be permitted in accordance with the aforementioned five point, five point, one A and B. And if it is permitted, the underlying designation will apply. And finally, that five point, five point, two B directs the city shall require applicants for any proposed development within a thousand meters of the abandoned mine hazard site symbols. So those symbols off to the in an organized territory to the east of the property to consult with the Ministry of Northern Development and Mines, that being the now natural resources and forestry regarding the nature of the hazard and undertake any remediation measures as legislated under the Mining Act and as Mr. Port mentioned earlier, that legislation has evolved slightly. But this is what our provincial policy or official plan references. Now, turning to the zoning bylaw, the majority of the property is zoned RU. The historic site is stone TRHL, the two shoreline EP areas. So and the application would amend that to the that the the MX TRHL and existing rule to that rural fifty-three exception zone with the site specific exception for community hall and place of assembly. The RU zone allows for a wide range of uses and services to meet the needs of residents, businesses and tourists. And that the with the addition of community hall and place of assembly, this aligns with the establishment with most of the uses identified in the master site plan with the exception of the lodging, which is identified as area seven on the plan and the eco camp with fire gathering area, area ten on that master plan. This assessment is based on the information provided and may change as additional information is provided about each of the intended uses. Now, the HL overlay zone identifies lands which are susceptible to flooding or erosion or any other physical characteristic which would cause harm to persons or lead to the deterioration of buildings or structures. Our understanding is that the HL overlay was put in place due to the proximity of the MX zone areas, then that TRHL. Which and it does severely restrict the establishment of new uses in that area and must be removed if there's going to be development in the yard site. And the MX zone is the areas of aggregate extraction on the property. Now, turning to interdepartmental agency circulation, we did circulate this for comment to and I'll summarize the comments that we did receive back. Bell Canada has requested to always be circulated in any future materials related to this development project or infrastructure policy initiatives. They have asked us to note that Bell Canada does not generally comment on the following development applications. Official plan and zoning bylaw amendments are law controlled temporary use and interim control bylaws. However, Bell Canada does generally comment on site plan approval, draft plans and subdivision and draft plan of condominium application. So we will be sure to circulate them on the site plan control approvals. Ministry of Agricultural Food and Rural Initiatives noted that if the project involves work on the building or facility and requires a building permit that houses the horses and there are more than five horses, then an approved nutrient management strategy is required prior to issuing the building permit. Ministry of Environment Conservation Parks noted that sewage daily design flow is under ten thousand liters a day and is under the jurisdiction of Northwestern Health Unit. They being the Northwest Health Unit are also reviewing with her water compliance group. If the drinking water system will be designated under MECP legislation, waste area and the aerial imagery was stated by KCA to be a metals pile and was cleaned up when they acquired the property. There are no distinct record of site condition triggers, but it is ultimately the city's decision on whether or not to require one. And the city has not made that such a determination. Ministry of Northern Development Mines now to Resources and Forestry has advised the environmental impact study be requested to support this rezoning application as provided for in section five point, one and eight point, nine of the official plan. And an environmental impact statement should provide greater confidence that natural heritage policies of the provincial policy statement are being followed. Due to large size of the subject property, diversity of habitat types and extensive shoreline frontage, the property potential supports significant wildlife, fish and or species at risk habitats. They have contact information for advice on requirements related to species listed as threatened or endangered under the Endangered Species Act two thousand and seven. The Northwestern Health Unit notes that everything they have been provided right now has been under the assumptions of residential use, not commercial. They will need to take a look at what is currently present and whether or not there will be an impact with the change in use. They note there are currently two separate properties which you can see on the maps. So as long as they remain separate, it would allow have up to ten thousand liters per day for each of those properties. Transcan to pipeline limited or TCPL noted that their pipelines and related facilities are subject to the Canada Energy Regulator or CR C R formerly the National Energy Board. As such, certain activities must comply with the Canadian Energy Regulator Act and the National Energy Board Damage Prevention Regulations. And they give a link for those regulations. We understand that the purpose of the zoning bylaw amendment is to amend the zoning bylaw and they summarize the zoning. TCPL would like to request the following setback provisions be included in the zoning bylaw amendment. Being A, a minimum setback of seven meters required for any part of a principal building or structure from the edge of the TCPL right of way. B, a minimum setback of three meters required for any part of an accessory building or accessory structure from the edge of the right of way. And a minimum of seven meters from the nearest portion of the TCPL right of way shall also apply to any parking area or loading area, including any parking spaces, loading spaces, stacking spaces, bicycle parking spaces and any associated aisle or driveway. In addition, they'd like to highlight some concerns about Black Sturgeon Lake master plan. So this would be the HDFC master plan included in this report. Prior to the circulation of site plan applications, they note that the hockey rink is located on the TCPL infrastructure and they recommend to be relocated. They note that there is a portion of road that is not constructed, which appears to be within the right of way. Roads are not permitted within the right of way and the parallel road must be set back at least seven meters. They know additional details for the structures that are but the right of way must be circulated for review by TCPL. And they've asked that TCPL be provided with construction timelines as they become available. And they also remind the applicant that written consent from TCPL must be obtained before construction or constructing or installing a facility across longer under the TCPL right of way conducting ground disturbance on or within the prescribed area, driving a vehicle, mobile equipment or machinery across the right of way outside of the travel portion of a highway or public road using any explosives within three hundred meters of the right of way and use of prescribed area for storage purposes. Now, we did circulate this for public comment and as of the date of the report and since no public comments have been received. So finally, I'll turn to my evaluation here. Which is that the proposed zoning amendment is appropriate to permit the future development of the property as described under the plush planning rationale and master site plan, with the exception of the proposed lodging and eco camp areas. Both the PPS and official plan contain policies supportive of the zoning bylaw amendment, but caution that appropriate measures need to be taken in regards to the development on or near former aggregate extraction sites and in proximity to identified mine hazard areas. The master site plan identifies an equestrian therapy with the jibway pony's paddock, storage areas and farm filtration marsh and a hobby farm with cafeteria and indoor equine center. The city of Khor is unable to assess whether this livestock use requires a nutrient management strategy unless must rely on the Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs as a regulatory authority. Based on the comments provided upon application for a building current, the NMS may be required given the act governing an MSL, NMS is applicable law. The Ministry of Northern Development Mines, Natural Resources and Forestry has identified the need for EIS in accordance with the policies of the plan. While the applicant has completed the phase one environmental site assessment, the scope of this assessment is distinct from an EIS that focus on upon impacts to natural habitats. And TCPL has identified a number of potential concerns regarding the planning and existing redevelopment of the property. Site plan control approval will be required prior to prior to development of the property due to the nature and scope of the proposed uses, its locations on the shores of Black Sturgeon Lake and the presence of identified environmental protection areas. So considering the number and nature of outstanding concerns, the application of the holding zone in accordance with section eight point, three point, three of the official plan is advisable in my opinion. This section states that where council uses a holding provision, the use of land may be restricted to existing uses until one or more of the following conditions have been fulfilled. And this the number of situations that can trigger that or can be included under those provisions. So with that, my recommendation as a planner for City of Canora is that the application for zoning bylaw amendment to change file number D fourteen dash twenty-two dash zero one to change change the zoning of the subject property from RU rural zone MX extractive industrial zone TRHL tourist recreation zone with the hazard land exception zone overlay and EP environmental protection zone to RU fifty-three rural exception zone with permitted site specific use of a community hall, place of assembly and EP environmental protection zone should be approved only with the addition of additional site specific exceptions. Be a minimum setback of seven meters required from any part of principal building or structure from the edge of the TCPL right of way. Be a minimum setback of three meters required for any part of an accessory building or accessory structure from the edge of the TCPL right of way. As C, a minimum setback of seven meters from the nearest portion of TCPL right of way. Shall also apply to any parking area or loading area, including any parking space, loading spaces, stacking spaces, bicycle parking spaces and any associated aisle or driveway. And further that the amendment should be approved with the addition of a H holding symbol to the RU fifty-three zone and that the H holding symbol may be may not be removed and further development of the subject property may not occur until now I'm just I'm just going to amend my recommendation a little bit here with the benefit of a few more days thought. Just then specifically section C here, just so note that. So A, being that environmental back study shall be considered with specific attention to the impact of the proposed development on the shoreline. Marsh area, black sturgeon lake water quality and wildlife, fish and or species at risk habitats. B, that confirmation has been received that the applicant has consulted with the Ministry of Northern Development Mines, Natural Resources and Forestry that should read regarding the nature of the abandoned mine hazard sites and that any remediation measures have been completed as legislated under the Mining Act or relevant legislation. And C, where I differ a little bit here that a study or studies are provided to the satisfaction of the city confirming that A, the areas currently zoned MX extractive industrial are rehabilitated to accommodate subsequent land use. And B, either aggregate resource extraction would not be feasible on the area of the property identified as potential aggregate area or that the proposed land uses create no risk for reasons of public health, public safety and environmental impact. With that, I conclude my report. Thank you for bearing with me. It's a bit of a longer than normal.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. So Jeff, you heard that. Do you have any additional information you'd like to add regards to what was communicated on the staff report? You're you're muted there, Jeff. But I heard I saw no, but I'd like to hear it maybe.
No, thank you. We'll continue to work with, as I mentioned earlier, we'll have a discussion with the planning department over the hold, no hold. We'd like to deal with those conditions upfront. But again, that will be a work in progress between myself, Canora Chiefs Advisory and and the planning department to make sure those conditions, we'd rather they be dealt with sooner rather than later. But the ball's in our court there, right? So we'll work with Melissa and Kevin to figure out what the best timing is to bring it forward to council, whether whether includes a hold or not. My only other comment in in closing, and I'm more than prepared to take more technical questions would be, this isn't a sell job in any way. You know, I'm a professional planner and I don't believe you should simply approve something because it's a good project. But this is a really good project and I think it's good for the city of Canora. I think these types of programs are long overdue in in our area. I think the Canora Chiefs Advisory has taken a very professional approach to to this rezoning application. They're just say tell us what to do and we'll do it. We've had no real arguments from them at all. I know council's been out there and had a look around already with some representatives from Canora Chiefs Advisory. And I think it would be, and I think the types of uses proposed for this property are a really good fit. It is for kind of more of our, you know, these programs are designed to occur in a rural setting. That's why we we wanted to leave the rural designation and eliminate the MX and eliminate the tourism recreational. And it just tweak it a little bit as Kevin Sumner indicated with a couple of site specific uses added just to make sure that in the future, we don't have to go back and and make any other amendments to the zoning bylaw. But I think I think the what's going to occur on this property over the next five to ten years, as you see, Canora Chiefs Advisory. And and they've already got quite a bit of funding in place to start developing these programs and these recreational programs like the ball fields and a another supportive residence for indigenous youth. The other thing I'd say is in all the conversations I've had with Canora Chiefs Advisory, the recreation components of this program as they go forward. And I believe including the beach area, they've indicated to me from day one, these will be open to the public as well. Of course, priority will go to to their programs and the use of these facilities such as the ball fields and the hockey, outdoor hockey rink and the beach area. But every indication I've gotten from Canora Chiefs Advisory is this will be a community-based program. Some of these areas and facilities will be open to the public. And this will add some additional recreation infrastructure to the city of Canora as well. My final comment is it's not just a city of Canora project. It's really a Canora district project. While it is Canora Chiefs Advisory, these program, the the catchment area for indigenous youth for these programs is is not just the city of Canora. It is to a large extent, the entire treaty three area. So this will service not just the community, but the region as well. And I think that is something to kind of bear in mind going forward. It's a great addition for the city of Canora and the Canora District.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Kevin, I think you had your hand up earlier. You want to chime in?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, yeah, thanks. I meant to touch on the end of my report, just in regards to Mr. Port mentioned further dialogue and certainly we're happy to meet with Mr. Port or other representatives of the property owners at their convenience. But just the fact is due to the unusual timing of the special meeting, this is going to come to the whole next week at council. So I'll be drafting a report after I can close after the meeting ends tonight. Just to meet our deadlines for getting that to to administration and for review by by our administration and out to council and with their agenda package. So you know, unfortunately, while we're happy to meet with Mr. Portman and maybe able to come up, provide more comment at the public meeting, my my report to council will be based pretty much directly on whatever recommendation is made by the pack tonight.
Yep, that's that's fine if I may, you know, that's the statutory public meeting that's coming up on Tuesday, Kevin. And so we'll 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 run through the drill much like we 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 did here tonight. The big question then is does it then go to council for approval? Or do we want to complete the statutory public meeting, get that done according to section thirty-four of the Planning Act? And then do we want to hold off taking it to council for approval or 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 is it then a rush? Or or does it stay on the agenda to go to the next council meeting? That's, I think, the area for discussion between myself, KCA and the city planning department when it goes to councils. We're going to have this statutory public meeting next Tuesday. There's no doubt about that. And I don't have any problem with Kevin's report going the way it is. That's fine. We can actually have a little bit of a discussion about it at the statutory public meeting.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of the application? And then may I remind you to please unmute and state your name and address for the minute taker? And then may I remind you to please uh, unmute and state your name and address for the uh, minute taker? Seeing none, is there anybody from the public who'd wish to speak in a opposition or oppose of the application? And hearing none, I will turn it over to the committee members. Any committee members, just go ahead, raise. Uh, John, we'll start with you then, John, please.
Yeah, thank you. Um. The pits and quarries, I got a couple of questions. Actually, the pits and quarries. Is all the air depleted out of them or do you know? Are they depleted?
There are two, there were two pits. There's one kind of to the northeast, uh, it's, it's the one pit and it's. In the pit world, it's a small pit. Uh, it's a little bit of a hole in the ground as a matter of fact, and I think they, they had actually, I think the strikers had been uh, dumping some uh. Uh, old appliances and such in there, which has since been cleaned up and that's all documented in the uh, environmental assessment that's already been completed. Uh, there's not a lot of material in that one anyway. Uh, so I'd say no to that one. The other one, which is on the south that was, well, it's still zoned extractive industrial more to the south of the property as you come in on Stricker Road. Um, that one appears to have some aggregate uh, uh, material uh, still in it and available for extraction. Uh, however, I had a long, several long conversations with Canora Chiefs. About whether uh, they would keep that zoning and keep that permitted use uh, or not. And uh, they were uh, insistent and that's why we've made the application the way we have. Is that, no, they uh, they feel as though that is not part of something they want to do with the property in the future. And they want to remove that MX designation. So there will be some material uh, there. In fact, uh, the way we ended our discussion, John, was that uh, they may end up. Uh, using some of that material from that area. Uh, as, as part of, if they need it for some of the infrastructure improvements that are going to occur on the property. We already looked at the quality of that from the ball fields. It kind of didn't cut the mustard. Uh, but there may be other areas such as septic fields and such where they could use some material on their own property. And in that case, if it's their own property, it doesn't have to be zoned MX for extractive industrial. That's only if it's for commercial uh, sale and use.
Uh, and the property owner, and the property owner has the sole rights to the material in the pits and quarry.
I believe so. Uh, that's something, uh, I believe so. Otherwise, the strikers would not, I don't believe the strikers would have been able to uh, remove that material. Uh, I believe they have the mineral rights as well.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Um, how many horses are stable there right now?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. Uh, I, I, I don't know that exact number. It's if a handful.
Okay, what do they, do you know what they're doing with their maneuver?
I do not.
Okay, that's fine. Um, for Kevin, I have, I have a bit of a question about this hold and no hold. Um, your, your second condition, B. About consulting with the Ministry of Natural Development Mines regarding the nature of the abandoned. I'm gonna bring it back up here. Sorry, mine hazard sites, those are the two to the east, correct?
Yeah, so they're, they're unorganized territory. So we really have no property records regarding those properties.
They're not on the property that we're talking about.
No, but the, they're, they're, the, any proposal within a kilometer uh, of those sites uh, by our policies is supposed to uh. Uh, uh, taken to consider remediation and mitigation. So that one kilometer.
I've had some experience of mine site remediation. The property owner of this property we're looking at, they have nothing to do with my little sites, those mine sites have been remediated or not, correct?
Correct.
And if they have not been remediated. Properly, uh, they may well just be holes in the ground and they help. Uh, they may need nothing more than fence around them. How does, how does the property owner encourage the? Owner of the mine sites, the bad of mine sites, or remediate them?
Well, that's, I think we, we need to apply some discretion in uh, working with the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry and uh. You know, certainly if there is a risk from those uh, mine sites, we would need to be considerate of that. Uh, we, we simply don't know. Uh, and I, I don't want to have, start getting into guesswork here, uh, but uh. You know, uh, what, that's where we're asking for confirmation from the ministry. Uh, regarding the nature of the, those abandoned mine hazard sites and that any. Uh, remediation that me- measures and you know, and we could certainly amend that recommendation to be. Uh, any remediation measures, uh, if any, uh, have, if any are necessary have been completed to, to, as referred by legislation. I, I have to be, I have to be.
My point, my point is if they haven't been completed and they're not going to be completed for two years or three years. Then you've got a hold on property in question for two or three years.
Yeah, and that, and that actually happens with all of our aggregate extraction sites that are adjacent to property that's owned by other landowners. Uh, the, the existence of an aggregate extraction site does place limitations on the uh. Uh, what can be developed on nurturing properties under the policies I've outlined in my report.
I mean, if I, if I could uh, maybe put a few words in here, I mean, we will be following up with the ministry's staff on that. I can assure you our position. Uh, on it will be because if they were located on the subject's land, it's our problem and we have to deal with it, right? If it's not located and it's well to the east and it's on crown land or private land or whatever. I guess my question is going to, my point is going to be with the ministry staff is that's really not our problem. That's your, why didn't, if, if there's a problem with these abandoned mine sites, why didn't you deal with it earlier? Don't, don't put it on the abutting landowner and make it their problem. Uh, and then hold up. The approval of the zoning bylaw so we can get on with these programs and services for the community. We'll deal with the ministry on that. We'll see what they have to say. Uh, but uh, I think it would be uh, more than onerous on Canora Chiefs Advisory. To force them to get involved in a lengthy and expense, uh, uh, expensive mine rehabilitation program. For potential hazards that aren't even on the subject property. Why, you know, I don't see how it could be made to be their problem.
That's my point. Uh, yeah, I'm not sure I agree with that particular condition, but I won't. If it's, if it's, I mean, if it turns out to be an issue. I mean, I guess then this, the city would have to remove the condition to, so you could proceed.
I mean.
Uh, with.
To use, to use a common sense example, if uh, if a problem shows up on your neighbor's property. Um. The city doesn't go after you to fix your neighbor's problem. You go after the person who was responsible for it, not the neighbor. And that's kind of the way this shapes up in my view.
Okay, I don't have any further questions. Thanks.
All right, thank you, John. Uh, any other members? Bev, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, yes, thank you. Uh, I'm just wondering, I'll just first start with the roadway. Who owns the roadway into this, into the subject lands? And is it the city?
Yeah, right to the property boundary, I believe.
I, I didn't hear. Who owns it?
Yes, that is, that is municipal, municipally owned road to the yard site. Uh, it ends right around the uh, the property boundary there.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay. The reason I was asking is potentially there could be a hundred cars traveling down there if they were going to a powwow or going to uh, the lodges or whatever. So. Um, that was a question that I had. Um. Is this project, is it like, is it gonna be phased in? Like, what's your timeline? What's, what's the plan? What are you starting with?
Some, some things are gonna start immediately. Uh, for example, the community gardens, they, they got started on that last summer. Some of the E Quine programs, they got started on last summer. Um, certainly, uh, they've received funding from uh, Jay's Care Foundation and they're anxious to start with the recreational ball fields. And in fact, uh, I'm fielding a call from an architect who has some questions about proceeding with the outdoor rink, so. Those uh, those types of programs are already underway. In fact, we've had meetings with the, the city planning staff. Uh, on a residential treatment facility, which is a rent, which is renovating the old uh, Stricker Residence there. Um, and in fact, uh, before they can take occupancy on that because some of the renovations are underway. Uh, the, the zoning has to be completed and 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 we've agreed to that and 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 we recognize that. So some things are already underway. Then um, some of the others like the wilderness camp, uh, they want to do some eco cabins. I know they've got funding applications in for those. But uh, Beth, it will be a phased approach and it will be implicated, it will be uh, implemented. As their resources permit, but uh, there is activity going on right now, uh, again, for the, for the four I already mentioned.
Is there an end date? Have you decided like in 10 years or 20 years? I know you've got a golf, golf course in there. I mean, this is all big projects. I would think.
Yeah, no, no.
Any idea?
In all my discussions with Canora Chiefs Advisory, uh, uh, they have a conceptual plan that's been developed by, by HTFC. And uh, they will continue to uh, implement it as time and resources permit. They uh, didn't give me a kind of a fixed timeline to complete implementation of the conceptual plan. My uh, gut tells me after being involved in this stuff for so many years. I think you're looking at a, to be fair, I think if you add. If you look at everything in the conceptual plan, it's probably a 10 year development plan. But they could probably get most of it done in the first five years.
That'd be great. Um, can you tell me some, give me some information on the lodging and accommodations?
Uh, well, there is a, uh, right now, it's a treatment program they're working on right now. Uh, the building permit that was issued is for. Uh, renovation of the old residence. That's for. A treatment facility for suicidal uh, uh, indigenous youth. So that's a really important facility that's underway right now. That's why we want to get the zoning through and it, and approved. The other one I met with Case, the other one I've met with KCA on and they're called Eco cabins in the planning report. They are unserviced wilderness cabins, uh, kind of one bedroom each. Uh, that will be uh, part of their wilderness youth programming. Uh, so there'll be a series of programs. They won't, these little cabins, I think they're starting out with four. There may be as many as eight when they're done. Uh, but uh, they will remain unserviced, uh, so there won't be water and sewer requirements there. They'll, they'll be like kind of big bunkies, right? And uh, the meals and shower facilities and all the other stuff would be back at the main. Uh, the old Keno Farms, uh, big building with the kitchen facilities. So that's where they're take their meals and uh, and uh, showers and other types of uh, facilities. So they're the, uh, they're the couple of residential uh, uh, bits of residential infrastructure. That are either underway with the residents being renovated or uh, very close to uh. Going to the city for building permits for the eco cabins.
Okay, and are those eco cabins? Are those at number 10?
Let me have a peek.
They plan? There's eight, there's eight there and then on, uh, let's say number seven on your plan, there's, it looks like 21 cabins there.
Yeah, that's uh, yeah, they're not looking at 21. That, that, this is a preliminary conceptual plan. I think the max they're looking at would be six or eight. They were just some dwellings that are some cabins that the landscape architect drew in, but yeah, it's number, it's actually number seven on the conceptual plan.
Yeah, I see seven and then number 10, there's, there's cabins there, some kind of cabins. Um, the reason that I'm asking is there's so much potential here. I could just end up being an income property?
That is never the way it's been framed to me. No. Uh, it's not been framed as an income property at all. It's always been on a not-for-profit service delivery basis.
Not-for-profit. Okay, so what about, uh, there's gonna be counselors, there's uh, different teachers, I understand. Is there gonna be a nursing? Like, where are these people staying? There's gonna have to be someone on, on the property with these, with these youths. I would think there must be a complication for them.
Only for, uh, yes, there will be some accommodation for staff. Uh, but not all staff. Uh, the uh, let's use the uh, residence that's being uh, renovated right now. That'll be a 24/7 program. So one of the units in that residence will have to be for a staff person. Uh, uh, or, or multiple staff people who would rotate in and rotate out. So for example, uh, for programs like that, they will, staff will need to reside on site. I think for the wilderness youth program component, they probably need staff on site. Uh, but a lot of the other programs may well be day programs and i- in the delivery of those programs. Uh, staff accommodations uh, would not be required. So it'll be a mix, at, at the end of the day, it'll be a mix of both.
Okay, any idea how many will be employed?
That, I don't have a number on that from KCA.
Okay, um, you were talking about the um, um, place of assembly and what was the other one? Uh, is that what you're using for the keynote farm building itself? Is that where? That's going to, that, oh, you're not, you're not constructing a new building for either of. Oh, I see. Okay, yeah, cuz.
Yeah, that's why I wanted the place, place of assembly in as a permitted use to accommodate the keynote, the old keynote farms building.
That's where, where it's going to be. Okay, so. Um, yes, because number two and number six on your plan here is referring to a cafeteria and a canteen. And again, this is why I'm saying to me, there, there's so much potential for um. You know, for tourism, really. These people are gonna go, I mean, I'd love to go. It looks, it sounds interesting, right? People are gonna wanna go. That's what I'm saying. It sort of sounds uh, like a tourist area. So you will have a cafeteria and a canteen. That's a plan or is that like that?
No, that is, that is, uh, they, they, I believe there, I don't know if they've uh, been to the city for building permits. But I do know they've been working with uh, the local architect to complete the uh, drawings and specifications. For the renovation of the kitchen facilities in the old Keno Farm Building. So there will be a. A, a modern uh, up-to-date kitchen facility in the, in the Keno Farm, which is, you know, part of the canteen proposal.
Okay, um, the boat docking, they have to go through M and R for the permits and consents as usual as other people?
Uh. Maybe not, uh, really, uh, for the M and R, if uh, any dock structure uh, is not occupying. Is occupying less than 50 square, 50 and square meters or 161 square feet of lake bottom. Then they don't need M and RF approval. So. The short answer is if they're building an extensive docking system. Where they will be occupying more than 161 square feet of lake bottom. And that's really three six by six cribs. So it's not that much, but then they would need M and RF approval. Uh, if not, then they still would need this approval from the city of Canora for a building permit because uh. Boat houses and docks and related structures still need building permits.
So maybe you can give us some information about what they're. What the waterfront development is. I see there the words waterfront development. What's the story?
Not a lot, not a lot. They wanted to enhance the beach area. They want to build, uh, they've talked about building a volleyball court down there. Uh, there is a bit of a, there, it, there's a lovely beach area in behind that is a bit of a. A bull rush wetland area. Which uh, has already been uh, assessed by Ryan Haynes. Uh, in some of his early work and uh, and. In his consultations with the Ministry of Natural Resources, it's been confirmed that that is not a. Uh, a value, a provincial value requiring protection like these other EP designations on the property. Uh, in Ryan's and my uh, conversation with KCA. What we've advised them and also with the landscape architecture consultants is we should still take a best practices approach. To uh, because that can still be used for stormwater retention and it does have a, a useful natural value function there. So if they want to construct a volleyball court, um, they can. But uh, working with HTFC and myself and Ryan Haynes, uh, we've advised, well. It, it should go forward so there's no negative impact on that. Uh, on that little wetland, little small wetland complex, even though it's not been identified as a natural area that uh. Requires protection. So we'll, we'll work around that. All the other uses in the beach area are very passive. The only thing that's a little more uh, where there would be some development and some change in the landscape would be. Uh, the volleyball court that they want to put down there and a volleyball court doesn't occupy a lot of space anyway. It would be just an outdoor sand volleyball court.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. Um, your area, your fire area or fire camp area, you that echo that you were just talking about, I think, on the lake there. Do they have to abide by M and R rules for fires?
Oh, yes.
Oh, they do. Okay.
And city of Canora rules for fires.
Okay.
Yes. So if there's a fire ban on, no fires.
Okay, that.
They're not exempt.
Yeah, um, your storage is spoke about storage. Um, is this for boats and trailers and recreational vehicles and pony trailers and everything? Um is this for boats and trailers and recreational vehicles and pony trailers and everything? Are they gonna have anything like that on the property?
Not to my knowledge, no.
No, cuz I would think the size of this property, they're gonna have to be doing some traveling and I, I mean, you can't do all with the vehicle, so.
Oh, well, yeah, that would be for uh, that would be storage and parking for uh 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 their own use as it relates to program delivery.
Okay. Uh what else do I have here? Uh new structures. I think that's that's about it. Um thank you for the information. I think there's a lot of potential here. I really do and uh, yeah. Good luck, I think it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bev. Uh any other members, Ray? And you're muted, right?
You sort of that. Yeah, Bev captured a lot of the questions there. Thanks, Bev. Overall, yeah, I'm I'm looking at this, it's it's quite a a a good concept and there. But there's a lot of moving parts and it's it's a little difficult to grasp everything here on on short notice. One thing you guys talked about uh quite a bit there was uh the eco camp areas and the proposed lodging, and if I could go back to. Your evaluation, Kevin, if you could clarify something for me. What do you mean in your first paragraph of your evaluation where you say? Proposed, the proposed zoning amendment is appropriate with the exception of lodging and equal camp areas. Can you clarify that? You're on, you're on.
Yeah, yeah, cer- certainly, uh so under the rural zone, uh it's my opinion that uh. You know, there's a lot of information to go on here, but so my best understanding is what's being proposed there would not uh. Uh be permitted under the RU zone, uh even with the the exception fifty-three. Uh specifically under the RU zone, you're allowed only one dwelling and uh. One secondary dwelling and or or one bunkhouse or sleep cabin. Uh so uh there's no way for us to support multiple uh dwellings on the property. Uh we we consider that a campground probably be the, in my opinion, probably the best description. And then uh, you know, if there's a camping area specifically, then you know, that would be considered a campground as well as a different of need. Uh in a of a different nature, uh by my opinion, you know, I certainly, you know, willing to consider more information as brought forward. Uh that's my best uh interpretation of the limited information that was provided.
Well, I mean, I would disagree. I, you know, my view on that was it's a, it's a program that would be delivered that would fit under the category of a group home. Because it's uh, while it's not a long-term, it's a short-term function. These kids are gonna be, these are gonna be troubled kids that are there and they're gonna be staffing and supervision on a twenty-four-seven basis. So I would argue that, uh and in fact, we've had this discussion, that it does fit under that category. Without that program, without that group home function. It's not there, okay?
Even with the group home, you're allowed.
So 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 I have a solution, let's not split hairs on it. Uh if we're gonna do an exception, uh let's add that as a permitted use and be done with it.
Well, I guess.
Let's use this, let's use this discussion, uh you know, that's a good question, Ray. Let's use this discussion.
Question, how how can we approve this? On one hand, you're uh the planner saying it's. These these lodgings and equal campers aren't aren't allowed on this recommended uh zoning amendment. Yet you've got all these things being developed now, like I I don't get it.
Yeah, so 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 if that's the position, let's add it. We have place of assembly. Uh as another use that's added and uh the other one escapes me at the moment, so let's add a third one, which would be these eco cabins. And then uh both for uh the comfort of this committee. Uh and for the time when the application comes forward for building permits, let's remove all doubt. Add it as another one of these site-specific uses that is permitted because it's not bad planning, so there's no reason not to add it. And uh and that way, um there's no question in the future. When uh they come to implement this program, that it's a permitted use in the zoning, in the uh bylaw as amended.
Okay, that kind of leads to one of my next questions, again to the planner. Given that these aren't approved. And and Mr. Port's talking about a uh a site plan agreement. Is there, is there a way, Kevin, that we can add? Another recommendation that. But we uh with with the holding zone. We we add the fact that that we have a site plan agreement, um you had o- other things there, engineering plans and archaeological assessment, which. Uh I guess that's a third question, have we done that yet? Most of the sites we've dealt with in in Black Sturgeon. I don't, I I don't wanna say the majority, but an awful lot of them. Seem to crop up with uh with archaeological uh issues. And uh we haven't made mention of that in the report as a recommendation, and. Somewhat concerned with that.
Only.
I mean, I I can, I can, I can speak a little bit to that. I mean, we've been in touch with uh the city of Canora from day one on this amendment. One of the things we did early on was flag any issues uh that would need to be dealt with. Uh and I believe we've uh upheld our end of the bargain. An archaeological has never been raised as a planning issue, not from day one.
Well, it's in the evaluation, this report, and uh item E in the valuation of the holding. Uh.
Just just one second there, Jeff, just Kevin, did you wanna answer the question?
Yeah, so in terms of what we can require under holding zones, if we had identified uh that there was potential for archaeological concern. That's certainly something we could, it empowers us to include under uh holding provision. Uh at this point, uh there was during the review where there's no identified uh archaeological site on that portion. I I do know that further west on the Black Sturgeon Lake system, there's uh sites that have been uh identified in the past, but. Uh to the best of our knowledge, we're unaware of any such site on this property.
And I guess just to add what Kevin had to say. Um in the official plan, when official plans are prepared, known archaeological uh. Uh uh resources, uh either known or with potential are are provided to the city and are already on the official plan maps.
Uh, Ken, yeah, Ken.
Yeah, uh just circling back to what I think was a an earlier question as part of that, that the that um. The the statements there uh was about how to permit these uh the the uses that, in my opinion, aren't permitted under the what's being requested. Uh the committee is certainly uh able to make recommendations as to uh change to the or the to the fifty-three uh exception. Uh I would suggest that if the committee was wishing to accommodate those proposed uses. It would be that I would recommend adding uh the campground as a permitted use. And uh the these, the the lodging is uh, I have to admit, I'm a bit. I'm a bit, I'm a bit unclear just from the informations we've provided to how, just how best to characterize those. Um it might be best to uh characterize them and, you know, and this is a bit of a strange one, but uh as a resort, which is established. Uh it is a tourist establishment that provides accommodation through all or part of the year. That may or not, may not have facilities for serving meals, uh et cetera, which we do have elsewhere on the site. Um uh they're just a problem with campground, when I look at it more closely here, is it does, doesn't provide. Really for lodges or rental lodges. Um so that might be the closest, you know, when trying to. And trying to fit it into the the best category under the zoning bylaw or use or. Or the alternatively, it would be, I guess you could add a new use of uh eco lodge and uh. With the description as per our definition is provided by Mr. Port, it's just that I'm a bit hesitant. To make a final judgment on the fly, just because all I have is the description of eco lodge. And knowing something about the structures, I I don't know enough about. The uses to.
Wha- what's your, what's your recommendation then? Uh Kevin, it's like, I'm having a hard time. Uh I I'm having a hard time uh accepting the recommendation to move ahead. When, when one hand you're saying no, and the next, and the next breath you're saying. Your recommendation is to approve it.
What? We do have a, you know, a stated uh uh guess at a sort of a ten, ten-year timeframe to developing everything. Uh so that certainly leaves plenty of time to for uh future zoning amendments before that stage of the project is uh is undertaken. Uh you know, certainly, you know, the the majority of what's being proposed in that concept plan or site plan. Is supported by zoning by law amendment. I I based my recommendation off of what was requested in the uh application, so um. Uh, yeah. So, you know, I could, I recommended what, approval of what is, what was requested. Uh with some holding provisions, uh but certainly, uh if we wanna move beyond what was uh requested to uh. Accommodating additional uses that are desired by uh the applicant, uh you know, I'm certainly willing to. Yeah, willing to consider those. I'm just a bit hesitant to make a call on the fly cuz we didn't, we reviewed what was requested, not.
Right.
What could, what could be requested.
Mr. Port, are you moving ahead with the lodging already? There's work being done on the lodge.
I've had, I've had a, I've had one meeting for sure with an architect and uh Canora Chiefs Advisory. Um and a developer, a builder, uh and they were at this time preliminary. Still preliminary, we haven't had a meeting since. Um they wanna do it, okay, because um of the discussions I had with them. I think they're still getting their financial resources together to implement that. So I can say with the a high degree of certainty. That it is, uh it's not one of those programs I said to Bev, it's kind of happening right away. But I would say it would, it would be uh in the next phase of development for sure, so let's make sure it can be accommodated. Uh in the amendment, when the amendment to, when the amendment goes through, because uh yeah, it's a program, they are keen on delivering, so. Um I think this is a good discussion and we should make sure the, we get the amendment correct.
Any other comments, Ray?
Uh.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I guess, I guess, I guess I'm sort of leaving the floor open for people to make comments. With respect to the lodging, but I have some other questions as well.
Okay, um but maybe we'll just stay on the topic of lodging then, Bev, did you have a topic with regards to?
Mike, thank you very much. My question actually regarding uh campground. Is that opening up then to RVs or, you know, little, little trailers and?
Yeah, my my understanding of the campground, it's not like a uh private campground like a KOA or provincial park or something like that. Uh the use they've discussed with me on uh the campground area. Would be, for example, uh if they got some youth programming involved for a couple of days, or even if it's, if it's the kids in the wilderness cabin. What they're gonna do is have a camping night, so it's just a place where you can pitch a tent. With a fire pit in the, with a fire pit in the middle, that's all the campground really is.
Okay, that's your interpretation now, but I'm saying when you get a powwow going and you got a hundred people coming, they may wanna bring their own uh camping. You know, trailers or what, so I wouldn't, I don't think we want to see that. I don't know, do we wanna see that? I'm just saying, if you, if you're saying camp camping ground, that that like I'm looking at rushing river, that's a camping ground to me.
Right.
So I just, I I agree with Kevin, we have to be careful.
Well, I mean, so the question becomes if there's a powwow and you've got the, you know, a couple of hundred people and uh. You've got uh over three hundred acres and a lot of it is open field. I mean, it gets back, does anybody remember the End of the World Music Festival? I mean, that was the whole idea there, and yeah, John remembers. Uh you know, you have a music festival there, you have a couple of days and people, uh people pitch tents, kind of like Birdsville Park. Uh they go up, the they're there, and then a couple of days later, they disappear. So because it's not a a a. A campground with, like a provincial park, where there are shower stations and RV pads and. Potable water and all that stuff, it is a. It is intended to be an unserviced area where uh. Kids could pitch some tents, or if you have a powwow, you could pitch a tent, and that's the extent of it.
And there wouldn't be any chance of somebody going there for the six months of the, like the summer months or something, just having their their RV or?
Oh, oh, no, all my discussions with Canora Chiefs Advisory is that's an example of a use that would not be open to the public. Because.
Is that something that in, say, five years, there was a change in in the um leadership of the Chiefs Advisory that they would wanna do that? Would they have to come to the city for approval to do that?
That was gonna be my answer, yes.
Oh.
Because that's not the intent here.
So Kevin, can you maybe confirm that as a representative of the city?
Yeah, so I I guess, you know, it to to be honest here, so if. Campground, you know, under the hypothetical situation where campground rather does a permitted use, I guess the the short answer is yes, it 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 does open that use. Um you know, if it's just listed as a permitted use, then there's uh there's quite a bit of variety to what can be considered a campground and uh. Um you know, probably at a certain scale, then you get into concerns around the septic systems and and uh how waste is treated and stuff like that. Uh but uh so the the short answer is yes, uh I guess, uh you know, we're we're moving on a bit on the fly here. You know, in terms of the providing, yes, with limiting provisions, uh that's something that we could. Yeah, I guess who you, it could be uh the, under the site-specific provision, it could be a a very, uh you know, there could be more description, so. Uh a campground list, uh that campground be listed as a permitted use, but limited to. Such and such or something along that lines, uh you know, if the committee gives me language about how you'd like to describe it, uh I can certainly. Take some time later tonight and and think carefully, be carefully about how I word that into the draft bylaw for council's consideration.
Thanks, Kevin. Um Melissa, I know you have your hand up, but Ray, I think you wanted to speak first and then I'll go to Melissa and then Bev, if that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, I I was just gonna suggest, I mean, overall, the concept, I'm I'm in favor of it, but. I I believe there's, there's a lot of details with respect to the campground, the eco camps, the lodging, that. There's no specifics, there's no detail, there's no engineering plans yet.
What? That'll all be dealt with at the building permit stage.
Okay, but but we don't know what you're you're looking for. What I'm suggesting here is. Maybe we make an amendment tonight to this uh this recommendation that we can include. Those things, the eco camp, the campground and the lodging, but also. That we include as a recommendation, section eight point three point three of the official plan, where there's a site plan agreement and the city has some control. With that section, the city, the 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 building department, the uh the planning department has some control of the size and scope. Of those uh campground developments. So that, you know, we're, we don't end up with a, I don't know, a huge. Tourist resort place out there that uh we have no idea what's going on. Uh that that's my suggestion, that we we move ahead with it. But the city has some control with the site plan agreement. Kevin, does that make sense?
I I I I'd have to say that I'd be more comfortable with uh listing it under or limitations under the the. The exemption, uh the youth, the adding a permitted use with uh with limitations in the wording, then uh. Um you know, just when it comes to site plan and control agreements, we are a bit limited in in what we can include under those agreements. And it's, that's something I'd probably wanna talk with our legal counsel about uh in the drafting of the site plan agreement, uh just how far we can go. I think uses are more appropriately dealt with under the direct amendment to the zoning bylaw.
Uh follow-up, Ray, are you good?
Uh no, anybody else? Go ahead.
So I wouldn't mind if we could just maybe open it up to the discussion, just to follow up on Ray's question and uh and the lodging. That's okay, Melissa, you were next, was yours regarding the uh lodging?
Uh no, Mr. Chair, I thought it may be beneficial to the committee for me to just read the definition of campground in the zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
So campground is defined in the City of Canora zoning bylaw one oh one, two thousand and fifteen is as follows. Land used for the parking and temporary use campsites occupied by tents, trailers, recreational vehicles and accessory uses and facilities. Such as administrative offices, sanitary facilities, recreational facilities, and a convenience store.
Thanks, Melissa. Uh Bev, you were next to ask, but if I can ask. Uh if your question was regard to the lodging, cuz I wouldn't mind just staying on topic on that and I can circle back to you if it has something to do with uh.
Well.
Another item.
Uh what I was gonna say is, uh I don't feel we have to rush into this tonight. If we have to take another week or whatever to get it right. If we're not comfortable with it, let's take a breath, you know, look at it for a week or something and Kevin, figure out what it is that we need there. And then have another meeting and and do it upright. I don't think we have to rush into it if it's not necessary. That's all. and then have another meeting and and do it upright. I don't think we have to rush into it if it's not necessary. That's all.
Thanks, Bev. I think the the downside of that though is it's already scheduled for council seven days from now. Ray, comment?
Okay, I I'm leaning towards what Bev just suggested too. We we don't have the proper wording in the recommendations. We have differing opinions between Mr. Port and Mr. Sumner here and myself. Uh, with the recommendations of what they actually want and the and the proper wording, we have a meeting in two weeks. Why can't these two guys hash it out, the planning department and and the agent with the proper wording? So that we can vote on this on in two weeks from now.
Yeah.
I'd I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah, me too.
It shouldn't take long. We've already, we've already hashed out the the bulk of it, but I'm not comfortable with how it's how the recommendations are worded.
Thanks, Ray. Hold on, Jeff. Uh, John McDougall, you were next in line.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and one of the things that came up is to to term at a group home. And a group home, you know, that says a supervised residential use building for a maximum of ten persons, exclusive staff who live as a group in a single household living arrangement where the residents require support supervision on a daily basis, but excludes correctional facilities and emergencies shelters. So it I I feel the same way as Ray and and some of the other members that we, I think we have to get it right. Instead of creating something that's complicated and open to interpretation, you know, if there's multiple buildings, that doesn't really fit into a group home. And maybe there's the right wording, uh, but and and we need to search for it and get it right before we're just throwing something out there on the fly that that might come back and create problems for the city and the committee and the developer and, you know, KCA as well, like we don't, we don't want to create problems. I think this is a good opportunity. We've identified an issue that we need to button up, and I think we should take the time to to do that. And and I agree with, you know, especially with Ray where and Bev where, if we need to delay it a bit. I know there's some pending, a pending council meeting, but I think it's important and and we owe to to the counselors to that are going to push us through that that we got it right. So that's my suggestion.
Thanks, John. Uh, Mr. Port, I know you did have your hand up, but John Barr did have his hand up earlier. John, I'll ask you and then I'll revert back to Mr. Port.
I was want I was wanting to suggest that a sleep cabin is a is a permitted use in rural zone, but it's the definition of a sleep cabin doesn't fit. What with the proponents plan in there.
Okay, uh, anything else, then, John?
No, I'm good.
All right, thanks. Mr. Port, you had your hand up for comment?
Yeah, just a bit of context here. We kept, we agree on ninety nine percent of what's going on here with this application. So we're getting hung up on the minutia. We're getting hung up on the one percent. And some kind of small ta- technical aspects of permitted uses and and the zoning bylaw amendment. There'll be more discussion at the statutory meeting next Tuesday. But I think there is ample room between Melissa and Kevin, Mr. Sumner and myself, because we do agree on. Uh, I don't want us to be framed that there's a disagreement between Jeff Port and Kevin Sumner. There's agreement on ninety nine percent. And I think that's the important part here. We can work out that one percent based on tonight's discussion. I think you should be comfortable at the end of the day that some of the issues that have been raised are are good ones. And and Kevin's listened and I and I've listened, but these are really very, very minor kind of technical planning issues that can be, in my opinion, very easily resolved. So, um, and what we do at the end of the day isn't gonna be perfect anyway. Uh, that's just the nature of planning and 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 how it unfolds, number one. Uh, number two, get back to the group home issue. Don't get. If a group home is permitted a use, don't get hung up on the definition. Because there is a ton of case law that whether it's even in there as a permitted use, you can have a group home in a rural zone. Whether it's ten individuals in a house or whatever the definition says, doesn't even matter because uh, both case law and the human rights code has overruled all that. So don't worry about that. Um, don't worry about the definition of a group home. That's something that if the city wants to tidy that up in the new zoning bylaw and the new official plan, that's fine, you can do that. But as far as a group home goes, if the Canora Chiefs Advisory choose to, and I think it's great. I think I, you know, I right now, the program they are working on is classified as a group home. Whether it technically dot the I, cross the T, fits the definition, which is really not part of the zoning bylaw anyway, it's just a definition. Uh, doesn't really matter one way or the other from a planning point of view. So as long as a group home is there and it's a permitted use, whether it's in a single building or individual buildings, the important thing is programs being delivered. It has a residential component to it. It has a twenty four seven staff supervision component to it. And it is providing a valuable service to the people who need it. That's what matters when it comes to a group home as a permitted use, not just on this property, but on any property within the city of Canora or Ontario for that matter. And and as I said, there's a ton of case law and human rights tribunal cases that back that up. So it's really not an issue to get too hung up on.
All right, thanks, Jeff. So just a a comment from myself before I move on to Kevin and then John. So although it's ninety nine percent, it's the one percent that you're asking to be changed. And you're asking the committee to make a recommendation to council, but by doing that, we take out all of the ability for the planning department to go through it and vet it. Uh, fire and emergency services no longer get a chance to comment it on that. So that's where I always prefer it to caution making changes at this meeting. It should be making decisions based on the information that was provided, not created. Uh, with that comment, I'll move to Kevin. You had your hand up. You wanted to make comment and then move to John.
Yes, I I just I just wanted to provide a point of clarification just on the topic of group homes. I I think some people are thinking about group home in terms of the lodges. But I just wanted to clarify that the there was already discussion of conversion of the residence on the main residence in the main yard site to a group home. And and it's my opinion that if the zoning amendment goes through as proposed, that group home use on the of the existing residents on the main property would be a hundred percent supported as a use of the site. Uh, but we do have a limitation, though, on multiple buildings, specifically. Uh, we have a section of the zoning bylaw residential lot occupancy, which is under a general provisions for residential rural zones that states that no more than one dwelling shall be erected on any lot in the in the rural area and no more than one sleep cabin in the in the rural zone. So that's where, you know, having group home on the property in the one permitted dwelling and even in the sleep cabin would be fine. Yeah, just when we start talking about multiple dwellings, it's not about the a group cow. It's not about the group home use. It's about the number of permitted residential dwellings on the property.
Thanks, Kevin. Uh, John Barr, you had your hand up earlier?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Jeff. I I don't really, I think we all agree there's gonna be lodging ourselves, or some supervised, some not supervised, maybe. So there's gonna be lodging and I think we're kind of overcomplicating things trying to define what that lodging actually encompasses. You know, you can, you can put, I'm not sure where. Add add prevent uses to to the to the to the recommendation for approval. Uh, I mean, you can try to define them to the nth degree. I'm not too sure you're gonna catch every particular circumstance that the lodge may be used for, but I just don't like to see us overcomplicate things to that extent. That we're tied up on the one percent, while we already agree on the ninety nine percent. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Any further comments or discussions from the committee member? Uh, Mr. Mr. McDougall?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, from a group home perspective, I think it was a a committee member. Uh, it was Bev that that asked a question and in response, Mr. Port had provided, you know, let's just put it as a group home, like these additional buildings or these cabins as as under the group home. And and, you know, I don't know, I didn't come to the meeting prepared to like with case law about group homes and and research that. I'm just on the fly. We're talking about what the the how we would permit the use of these or the addition of these additional buildings. And it just sort of looked like it was getting painted with the group home brush. And I I just wanted, I'm not trying to make things complicated, but, you know, the question was asked and by another committee member. It was answered by Mr. Port about the group home designation. And I just wanted to, you know, when you look at the definitions, and that's what I have to use as a committee member as a guide. Uh, because I can't, every definition that's provided to us, I can't look at the potential case law that relates to it. But I have to use that as a guide. And it wasn't a fit for multiple buildings. So I'm 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 happy to to have that group home facility there. I think it'll be useful. And and I think it's a great part of the development and but I think, you know, we owe it to to all the city residents and the counselors and and everybody to, when we are making a recommendation to council that we're clear on the use and that it fits with the the zoning and and that there's no sort of lack of clarity. You know, and 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 that's where my concern lies, not about what the definition of a group home is or what have you. It's just how can we articulate these buildings, these additional buildings, these cabins, these eco cabins into that uh, site development and and make sure that we've done our due diligence to make sure that it it, you know, falls into um, in an RU zone, it's a permitted use and 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 we're comfortable with that. So that was, I just wanted to follow up, you know, clarification on that. And I think if we can come up with that, you know, that clarification or how it's a fit, I think it's it's great. And but I I don't, it doesn't sound like any of us have those specific words for a recommendation right at this moment.
Okay, thank you, John. Any other members before I call on the secretary treasurer and the members? Okay, hearing none. So maybe at this time, Melissa, can I maybe get you to read out the resolution that was prepared prior to this meeting for us, and then we can listen and discuss?
Mine. Well, this is the resolution that was circulated to members in advance of this meeting. Resolve that the planning advisory committee recommends to the council of the corporation of the city of Canora to approve application for zoning bylaw amendment file number D fourteen twenty two O one, subject to site specific exception fifty three and a holding zone provision. The subject identified in application D fourteen twenty two O one, sorry, the subject lands are minuscule known as three seventy one Strucker Road and identified in a schedule that is attached to this resolution. The purpose of the zoning bylaw amendment is to change the zoning of the subject properties from RU rural zone MX extractive industrial zone TRHL tourist recreational zone with HL hazard land exceptions on overlay and EP environmental zone to RU exception fifty three H, which is rural exception zone fifty three and holding zone, along with the EP environmental zone environmental protection zone, my apologies. In the case of exception fifty three, the following site specific provisions shall apply. One, community hall is permitted. Two, place of assembly is permitted. And three, notwithstanding the provisions of the RU rural zone and EP environmental protection zone, a minimums minimum setback of seven meters shall be required from any part of principal building or structure from the edge of the TransCanada pipeline right away. A minimum setback of three meters shall be required from any part of an accessory building or accessory structure from the edge of the TransCanada pipeline right away. And a minimum setback of seven meters from the nearest portion of a TransCanada pipeline right away. So all shall also apply to all parking area or loading area, including any parking spaces, loading spaces, stacking spaces, bike bicycle parking spaces and any associated aisle or driveway. In the case of the lands rezoned RU fifty three H and EP environment protection, the H holding symbol may be removed when A, an environmental impact study has been completed with specific attention to the impact of the proposed development on the shoreline marsh area, black sturgeon lake water quality, wildlife fishing and or species at risk habitats. B, confirmation is received from the Ministry of Northern Development Mines Natural Resources and Forestry regarding the nature of the abandoned mine hazard site and that any remediation measures have been completed as legislated under the appropriate legislation, either the Mining Act or the Aggregate Resource Act. A steady year studies are provided to the satisfaction of the city of Canora confirming that A, the areas currently zone MX extractive industrial are rehabilitated to accommodate subsequent land uses. And B, either aggregate resource extraction would not be feasible on the area of the property identified as potential aggregate area or that they proposed land uses create no risk for reasons of public health, public safety and environmental impact. The effect of the zoning bylaw amendment is to rezone lands to permit the future development of the property as described in the planning rationale submitted by JCP Planning Development submitted March twenty twenty two and the master site plan prepared by HTFC Planning and Design submitted September twenty twenty two. With the exception of the proposed lodging and eco camp areas, which are uses for which the site specific exemption was not requested within application D fourteen twenty two O one. The committee has made an evaluation on the application upon its merits against the official plan, the zoning bylaw and the provincial policy statement twenty twenty and provides a recommendation to council purely based on these matters. Whereas the committee may have not had an opportunity to hear all public comments and.
Thank you, Melissa. Uh, to the members of the committee, you've heard the resolution. Is there any comments? Any concerns? Uh, John, go ahead.
Sure, I think one of the last paragraphs that Melissa read indicated September twenty twenty two. I think it's probably, is that twenty twenty one or is that a different month than twenty twenty?
You're correct. Sorry, that would be in reference to the master plan as submitted by HTFC Planning and Design, which was received in September twenty twenty one. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Uh, John Barr?
Condition B on the, again, on the wise, on the abandoned mine rehabilitation, is there any flavor to remove the last last razor, which is and that any remediation measures have been completed as legislated under the mining act, etc.?
Uh, Kevin, I'll refer. Go, I'm sorry, John, it's sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
Yeah, the the actual condition would be confirmation has been received that the applicant has consulted with the Ministry of Northern Development Mines regarding the nature of the abandoned mine hazard sites. And I would actually put located east of the property in question or something, but uh, somebody that's not familiar would think the ha- uh, abandoned land mine hazard sites are actually on the property. But and just leave out the last part about their remediation measures.
Kevin, would you like to comment on that for us, please, or for John?
Sure, my recommendation is based pretty much verbatim on the policies of our official plan. It's certainly the the way within the discretion of the committee to consider variations on the the wording. And I don't see a particular concern with the wording as suggested.
John, is that? So, John, is that something you would like to see changed on the resolution then?
I would, yes.
Okay, any other commit, any other committee members have any concerns with John's request? No? Okay. Kevin, you're okay. We'll just make that change. Melissa, please.
Mr. Barr, if I may just confirm, you would like uh, section B under the H holding zone provision to read confirmation is is received that the applicant has consulted with the Ministry of Northern Development Mines Natural Resources and Forestry regarding the nature of the abandoned mine hazard sites, period?
That's correct.
Okay, before I start asking for a mover, Ray?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Melissa, could you read the parse, the portion of the resolution that dealt with the the lodging and the eco cabins again? That they were.
Certainly.
There was an exception.
In the resolution. In the resolution, we we typically state the purpose and then the effect, so in the. Effect, we said the effect of the zoning bylaw amendment is to rezone the lands to permit the future development of the property as described within the planning rationale submitted by JCP Planning Development. March twenty twenty two and the master site plan prepared by HTFC Planning and Design September twenty twenty one. With the exception of the proposed lodging and eco camp areas, which are uses for which site specific exemption was not requested within application D fourteen twenty two. Oh one, my apologies to the committee and those on this call, my internet connection does seem to be unstable, so if I lose you, I do apologize.
You you good with that then, Ray? So it does not, it does not include the lodging, correct? That would be my interpretation of that.
We, if I may.
Sorry, Jeff, I'll just uh let Ray finish and then I'll move to you there.
Yeah, that was my interpretation too, that it's not included, and that's why we need to clarification. In the wording or or re clarification for for next week, so. I don't know where to interject here, if we want to make a motion to table this to for two weeks.
Yeah, so I mean, we can again open it up for discussion, I just wanted the committee members to know what resolution was placed in front of us, which has been recommended by the planning staff and circulated, so.
Oh, if I may assist the committee, we'd have no objection to those uses being added. Uh at all, uh uh we will likely request that they be added anyway to remove any doubt in the future. So uh if that's uh the preference of the planning advisory committee, uh uh we're fine with that, we're fine.
So again, then I'll open that up to discussion is to the committees, is that something we want to try to do? Keeping in mind that it hasn't gone through the planning department and hasn't been circulated throughout the departments. Uh Bev, you had a call, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just a question, Kevin, do you want to take, like, do you want us to break for fifteen minutes, you can review it and then come back to us with something?
If you're looking for a recommendation on how to categorize the use, I think I'd defer to Mr. Port, uh if we can speak on behalf of his clients, uh. I think there's a a few different uses that. In my mind, this potentially could be classified under, and I don't want to make a call. And then find out later that what my call is doesn't meet with what the actual intention is of the uh of the property owners and Mr. Port, so uh. Um you know, I I don't mean to pass them, sound like I'm passing the buck, but I I guess I am to Mr. Port on that one. Uh on the campground use, I'm clear when it comes to the eco camp area, uh but just those lodges, uh there's enough doubt in my mind that I'm concerned about making the wrong call.
Okay, Bev, so do we want to? Do we want to allow Mr. Port to try to draw up his resolution for us to approve? Ray?
I think we should table it and that these guys should, these guys should hash it out and come back to us with the proper wording. I'll make that, I'll make a motion that we table it for two weeks.
Uh secondary of that motion? Bev, you. Uh questions, comments before I call it? Uh Melissa?
Mr. Chair, if I may ask the committee member to just be specific with the motion, our next planning advisory committee date will be May seventeen. So if the motion could read, uh if the proposal is a deferral, just to which date and um just clarity as to the reason for the deferral.
Okay, thank you. Uh just having a moment of thought here. Um Melissa, can I refer to you if we have a motion in the secondary? I need to, we need to. Um we need to solve that motion before. My only my only question I wanted to ask is if we if we want to ask the applicant. If he wants us to make a decision based on the information provided in front of us. Before we go ahead and defer, so.
Certainly, you do have a motion on the on the table with the resolution.
I mean, our preference would be, if I may, uh uh an amended motion that simply includes eco cabins and lodging as a permitted use, uh. It wasn't included in our original ask, uh we could have included it in our original ask, but we chose not to uh. Uh for whatever, not thinking it would be an issue, to be quite honest. Uh so uh uh now.
But Mr. Porter, I'll probably stop you there. I'll tell you, if if it was for me, I could not support changing resolutions as we go, so that would probably not be some, I don't know how the rest would. Support, but at this time, I'm in a position to where I either have to deal with the motion that's on the table by Ray. And seconded by Bev, or if I can ask if we want to deal with your motion that's on the. Um so just, I'm trying to think here real quick and just not a sharp. Okay, so at this time, I. I believe my correct action is that I need to uh ask uh for a vote on, uh Ray, can I get you to clarify the motion? Uh and verbi- have it uh. Have it the way that you want that Melissa needs, thank you.
Okay, I'll 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 give it a try that uh I make a motion that we table. This resolution until the May seventeenth meeting. Given the the agent and the planner have an opportunity to clarify the uh recommendations. You're you're muted there, Robert.
Not in the game anymore, can I get a second for that, please? Okay, and that would be Bev, Melissa, is that a clear enough uh motion or do you need a reason why it's being deferred or is that good? Or more of a.
I I think that would be okay, um the committee understands that we're just looking to clarify the recommendation. And I believe a takeaway for city staff will be to work with the agent on um. Either it's an exception that we add or new definition.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Uh call the question, all in favor? Of course, okay, uh one, two, three. Three. Yeah, and let's see three, uh opposed, I'll get a vote on opposed. Okay, um that motion needs to be redone because we can't have a tied vote, so. Okay, just give me a couple of minutes, Melissa, I'll take some feedback on this too as well, I might need to pull up our terms of reference, we can't, we can't end on a tie. And all of all, all have voted, yes. Kate.
Stand down for five minutes?
I could your user.
Certainly no rush, Mr. Chair, we can just um um. We can all just go unmute and we'll just take some time, you and I can can chat in the uh chat if we have to, but I too will pull up our terms of reference and we'll come up with a.
Okay, thanks, let's just take a five minute breather, I'll just ask that everybody mute. And uh the only, the only others that would unmute would be maybe myself, Melissa. And uh maybe Kevin if we need to, and then if I need any support from you, Ray, I'll just kind of wave frantically for some guidance, okay, Ray?
Okay, I'm here.
Thanks. Ray, I think at this point, I, we can't end on a tie, I know that. I think at this point, I almost need to. Either ask you to. Um. Revote and then we vote on what's available or. Yeah, any ideas, Ray, I mean, we've never ended it, we've ended in a.
Just got to bring it back to the floor, Robert. And and come up with a decision. And revote.
Okay.
Basically, so.
And we'll go back to the original resolution?
Well, we just got to open the floor for discussion again and then uh. Then we'll have another vote or another motion.
Okay.
Cause that's what, that's what's going to come to, it'll be another motion and then we'll uh revoke. Doesn't have to be the same motion, we could uh refer to the the original resolution. If that's the case.
But Melissa, I think if you correct me if I'm wrong, I think we need to, I need to ask Ray to. Revote his motion, is that not correct?
No.
No?
No, I think it was just defeated and I read it too, this is a, this is a recommendation to council, so um. It it is good, though, I think in in Mr. Pearson, our vice chair's recommendation to you, perhaps we go back to the original resolution. As prepared by the city planner and we should appropriately, you know. Perhaps make vote on that one if you had someone to second.
Okay.
I think we just, Robert, and just to clarify, I think we just, we just opened the floor to discussion again.
All right, to the original resolution.
Open the floor to discussion and then it may, it may lead to the original resolution or some other motion and then we vote again.
Okay.
I muted.
You're still on there, Jeff?
Oh, I am, uh.
You are.
Did you, did you hear my dog?
I heard singing or a cell phone in the background.
When my dog started barking.
No, I thought I heard a cell phone or a ringtone in the background.
Yeah, I heard something as well, anyway, I'll mute now.
Yeah, my apologies, Robert, that was my phone. Oh.
You prepared to proceed, Mr. Chair?
I am, I'm just waiting for, I see John's, like, I'm ready, I just thought, once I see maybe John sitting at his chair, Bev. And once Chris maybe comes back into the picture, then I would just open it up for general effect.
Oh, my apologies, Mr. Chair.
No, that's a. Okay, so we'll come back as soon as I can see uh Chris is with us and then what I'll do when I see Chris, I'll just open it back up to general discussion. Okay, and Chris is back, so I think at this time now. We're going to uh move on with just general discussion. And entertain the idea of a uh mover and seconder for the original resolution, so that's the position that. Uh we're, I'm going to take at this point, so is there anybody that wants to have general discussion or comments uh? Before I ask? Okay, I hear none, oh, John, uh go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, so just on the original resolution, then. It would uh it would mean that those sort of additional eco type cabins or whatever we want to call them. Are not permitted and it would have to be an item that would come back before the committee again.
Yeah, so so the 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 original motion to defer. Is being considered as defeated and then uh because we're unable to make a decision, however, now we're at the position that we will. Uh discuss the original resolution that was provided to us by the staff. So, which I think does not um has the. Uh with the exception of the proposed lodging and eco camp areas. That uh, so that's where we're at now, John.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yes. Any other que- John or Ray?
Yeah, I. I just heard with the the question John asked you, I just want to clarify that with Kevin, is that correct, Kevin, that? With the exception of the lodging and the eco cabins, that would come back to us in the future?
Yeah, so uh i- if there's a future zoning amendment for those um for those uh uses, yes, that would come back before the. Committee, sorry, I was just reading something else here, am I catching that correctly?
Yeah.
Yes.
Will come back to us. Okay.
All right, any other discussions or comments from the members? Uh Bev, go ahead. And you're on mute, Bev.
Here I am, okay. Can can they just go ahead and build us, I mean, they're not, they're not gonna, they need to have a permit to build all this? To build those cabins?
Kevin?
Yeah, so uh yeah, for the cabins in particular, those uh from what's uh from my understanding, those types of structures would require uh. Building permits and uh those are the type of, that's the type that are, the type of construction that would require site plan and control approval. Uh there are some uses of, some of the proposed uses uh wouldn't require permits, uh you know, uh we'd have to go through the whole list one by one. Uh but anything that involves a structure definitely would require building permits and site plan and control approval.
So they really just can't go and build anything because we we were at a standstill here? Right, they still.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, so if it's propos- if if the zoning amendment is approved as uh requested by in the original application. Uh we'd be, would be able to approve all the uses on the property, like with the exception of. Uh any permits related to those particular, those two individual uses.
So then do they just come back to us at the pack committee? And say this is what we want to do or that's just dealt with 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 the planning department?
No, that would be a future zoning amendment to incorporate those uh additional uses, uh so. That would require a new zoning amendment application and would uh follow the same processes, including the uh pack open house and public meeting.
Okay, so and what's the timeframe on that, like, are we, are are um? Jeff, are you, were you planning on building these cabins this summer?
Well, number one. Number one, um there is some urgency, otherwise we wouldn't have paid for a special meeting. Okay?
Uh.
So that's why we're here today. So there is some urgency here. Uh number two, if the issue would be the eco cabins. Um and if the committee feels comfortable with it, uh in considering an amendment to the recommendation. I don't know about the lodging end of things, it seems to be these eco cabins is what we're hung up on. Uh let's include it as a permitted use up to uh. Up to eight unserviced. Uh cabin units or whatever we want to call them, uh. And this is a, and excuse, this is a zoning bylaw amendment, okay? Um um zoning bylaw amendments generally uh only have a certain degree of precision. So we're getting into to a level of detail that is better dealt with with site plan control than with a zoning bylaw amendment. Um so that presents a challenge here tonight, you know, we're working live, we're trying to figure this out uh here tonight. Uh but we're not going to be able to get the precision out of it that maybe might satisfy, give you one hundred percent satisfaction. But that's okay, because this is the zoning bylaw amendment.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't get that level of precision.
Okay.
The 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 key, the key thing is to include it as a permitted use, so when the time comes. For a building permit application, which will be sooner rather than later. That Kevin can look at the amendment and say, yes, that's a permitted use. We'll deal with the other site specific planning issues with the city uh at that time. But my suggestion would be uh whatever we want to, whatever name we want to give them that you feel comfortable with. Uh that it be included because we're going to ask for it to be included anyway.
Okay.
Now that it's, now that it's been raised as an issue and something that might trip us up in the future, let, we are good, we're, I'm going to work with the city planning department and we want to deal with that.
Okay, well, can I just say that it's not just the eight cabins that I'm concerned about, I mean, there was twenty one shown on that other area, you said that's probably just, you know, they've just. You know, drawn twenty one cabins and there, there's going to be other cabins, there should be other residents for these people to stay in, so that's what I'm looking at, just, let's just cover everything.
Yeah, and my question is um what would the planning issue be?
Well, I guess.
This is a rural, this is a rural zone.
Yeah.
I just want. Low density development.
Yeah, but if you can let me finish, I was thinking you were going to do like, uh you know, were you going to do townhouses or condos or something like that, that was kind of the information that I was looking at, but the fact is that they still have to stay someplace. So we just. So we just want to make sure that they're built there, that the wording is correct, our planners is comfortable with it and so is the committee, so. That's, that's the issue. But we need, you know, that's what we need.
Thanks, Bev. Kevin, you had a question, is your hand up?
Yes, I was just going to say that, uh, uh, you know, if we're going to include the eco cabins, uh, unfortunately, eco cabin isn't, uh. It, that isn't a use un- under the zoning bylaw. I, I would suggest, uh, through the chair that Mr. Port, uh, may wish to suggest, uh, uh, a permitted use. Or a use under the zoning bylaw definitions that he feels, uh, that the, these eco cabins would be most, uh. That would be best described as, and then, then that use is, uh, included, included if the committee so wishes as a. Additional permitted use under the site specific exemption.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. So I think at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Port. Mr. Port, I think at this, at this point, we can either. Take a vote on the resolution that was prevent, uh, presented in front of us. Or if you are interested in, in deferring in order to save some resources and time. And you can come back to a later meeting. I will allow you to decide maybe which you would prefer, and then if any, if any additions or, uh, changes. To the resolution should be coming from board members, I think.
Yeah, so I'm not interested in a deferral, uh, at this particular point, again, we called a meeting, a special meeting, uh, for a reason. And, uh, if the, uh, committee wishes to, uh, uh, approve the, or, or make the recommendation as submitted, uh, as submitted. Uh, even though, uh. It need, we think it will need a little bit of work, uh, I have no objection to that. Uh, I'll let you know, we will then be working with planning staff and, uh. And making sure that whatever zoning bylaw, whatever the final form is of the zoning bylaw amendment. It reflects the discussion we had here tonight. And if, uh, the planning department wants more precision on the nature of the use. And the definition of the use, that's fine, we can, we can certainly, uh, we can certainly provide that. And we will work on that issue, uh, going forward. To make sure that that is reflected in, in the final amendment that does go to council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Port. So now I think at this time, I'll ask the committee members, we've all heard the resolution. Is there any comments before I call the question and ask for mover shaker, uh, secondary?
Shaker.
Sorry, my, I'm just not as sharp as I used to be, Bev, so.
No, no, you're doing very, just fine, you're doing just fine. Well, I'm just, I, I guess my thing is, you know, we're trying to. In my mind, Kevin has to be comfortable what he's. You know, what he's, he's, um, accepting, what he's agreeing to, so we want to support him, so.
Okay.
He's not comfortable with it, so I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay, great. I see no other hands or opinions, so can I get a mover on the resolution, resolution that was communicated to us by the, uh, secretary treasurer? So I have it moved by John Barr and seconded by John McDougall. I'll call the question and ask for a vote. All in favor? And I will take, Melissa, did you get all of that, and opposed on that? Or defeated? And thank you, uh, Bev. Ray, no vote? Just to confirm abstain? No vote?
Oh, that's what I thought I was doing, okay. Okay, that's okay.
No, I, I voted for Mr. Chair for the resolution.
You did vote for it? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Melissa, did you get that then?
It did, yes.
Okay. And then I had asked for a call for defeated. And Bev, was that your hand or no?
Yeah. That was me.
Okay, thank you. All right, Melissa?
Thank you, committee, so that resolution will proceed to, to council as part of the report, the planning report. And the statutory public meeting will be held next Tuesday, May tenth at twelve o'clock noon. Uh, Mr. Port, we will be in contact, uh, hopefully tomorrow. And, and with the city planner, we will discuss moving forward. So, uh, thank you to the members of the public who are in attendance here this evening. So again, this was the meeting of the planning advisory committee who did provide a resolution to council or a recommendation, my apologies. Council does have delegated authority to make a decision. And that statutory public meeting will be held Tuesday, May tenth at twelve o'clock noon. So to, to access that meeting, please contact, uh, the planning staff at planning@canora.ca. Or, or the contact information that was provided on the notice, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item is an adjournment. John?
Yeah, I'll move to it, Jerry.
Thank you very much. All right, everyone, enjoy your evening, thank you.
Take care, Robert, looking good. Good night, everybody.
Good night.